We're ready.
Okay, thank you for that. So we are going to start with our roll call here. So I'm going to call this meeting to order. Gwen, can I please have a roll call? Or Beth? I'm not sure. I did not see Gwen on here. Will there be somebody who is taking roll call?
Yes, this is Beth.
Okay.
Sharing the mic with Yelena right now. Director Baker?
Present.
Director Case?
Here.
Director Diaz?
Here.
Director Foley?
Here.
Director Hamilton?
Here.
Director Minietta Ramos is excused. Director Mays?
Here.
Director Olson?
Here.
Director Wilson? Also excused.
Okay. Are we in compliance with the open meetings law?
Yes, we are in compliance.
Okay. Board members should have received the agenda and the 10-year master plan. I know that it will be up here, but we are going to get started with our agenda for the, for our special meeting that we have here. Yep, there we go. So I'm going to let Janice, I'm going to turn it over to Janice and her team to go through the, the beginning of this presentation. And then there is going to be time for board members to ask some clarifying questions about the presentation, what they saw in preparation for today and today. And then our goal of our meeting is at the end, there will be some board member discussion to talk through what the next steps are, that the board understands the, the facilities plan, the goals of it, and specifically can articulate then what the next steps are as we do that. So Janice, I'm going to turn over the meeting to you.
Okay. Thank you, Director Olson, and welcome and happy Friday, everyone. We are very pleased to be here today to present a culmination of work spanning nearly two years spent developing the college's 10-year facilities master plan. This was a plan that the board had asked us to ensure that we create and have a future vision for our facilities and our infrastructure here at the college. In January 2020, we partnered with Strang Architects to support the development of our 10-year plan. A project of this magnitude doesn't happen without a lot of support of many throughout the college from those who served on our cross-functional master planning steering committee, a cross-functional team of faculty, staff, leaderships, and students, our students, faculty, staff, and community who participated in many listening sessions, focus groups, and surveys, and my colleagues who are here today to support this presentation. From Strang Architects, we have Larry Barton, Andrew Martin. Also from our facilities team, we have James Weishon, our senior director of facilities, Jenny Rothie, director of facilities, planning, construction, and sustainability, and Chris Johnson, our senior project manager. Also to here to support today's agenda are Laura Bray, our vice president of college advancement and external communications, Dr. Christine Mannion, our vice president of institutional effectiveness, and Eva Martinez Paulus, our chief diversity, equity, and inclusion officer, and Eva Keith are our controller. Next slide, please. So we have a pretty full agenda for you here today. We have an hour and 45 minutes with you here today to just recap the facilities master plan presentation, which we sent out a recorded version of it to you last week. So I'm hoping you've had an opportunity to review that. We've gotten some questions, so appreciate the time you spent reviewing that presentation. We aren't going to go through the whole presentation here today. We'll just do some highlights. And then we're also going to be showing you a video of, of, of what's going on down at our campuses throughout the district. So we're going to do that and have you ask any clarifying questions that you have about the plan, any information that you still need with respect to that plan. Take a quick break. And then we do have some questions that we would like the board to give us input on as to next steps and how we move forward in, in some of the planning and prioritization of these projects. So we'll have some time at the end for you to give us your input on some questions that we have for you. And then, of course, we'll come back and do some final reflections and talk about where we'll go from here. Next slide, please. So this was a slide that was presented to you in the pre-recorded version. And so why a facilities master plan? And again, this was something that the board, we had a plan that was done many years ago that has now since lapsed. And so the, the time had come to make sure that we're looking at the vision and the future of the college. So that's why this plan was created. And to basically summarize the reasons on this slide, there are many, but we do need a strategic vision that really manages the expectations and requests of our stakeholders, leverages our limited funding streams to produce the greatest return on our taxpayers' investment, and most importantly, I think, to ensure that our facilities, infrastructure, and space planning supports the success of our students and community. So I'll just pause there for a minute. There's a lot of words on this slide, and I apologize for that, but there are a lot of reasons why. Next slide, please. I'd like to share with you now a very, about a six-minute video that just gives you a very broad overview of our facilities, shows the current state of many of our aging buildings, and depicts the upgrades and renovations already that have already begun that this plan will continue to build upon. So if we could play the video, please?
Milwaukee Area Technical College has been preparing students for the workforce since 1912. As the largest college in the Wisconsin Technical College system, M A T C has four campuses and two education centers within Milwaukee and Ozawki counties. M A T C's physical presence includes nearly 3 million square feet within 20 buildings and four leased facilities on 376 acres of land. This great physical presence is aging. M A T C's buildings were built between 1890 and 1996, with the newest wing added in 2008. The average age of campus buildings is now 56 years old. With this age comes increased operational costs and challenges in portraying the state-of-the-art facilities expected of a premier technical college. Milwaukee Area Technical College has partnered with Strang Architects to engage the campus and community in developing a data-responsive and intentional long-range 10-year facilities master plan that addresses these facilities' challenges in ways that allow M A T C to leverage limited funding to produce the greatest return on investment, creating consistent branding opportunities throughout the M A T C district and remaining relevant and competitive in our region. The master plan sequences and plans projects with the greatest impact on student success, modernizing facilities, and adjusting spaces to reflect the best practices of today's changing learning environment. Much of the work outlined in the master plan is underway currently, as reflected in recent and ongoing construction and remodeling improvements on M A T C's campuses. Several guiding principles shaped the facilities master plan. First, Milwaukee Area Technical College will improve community perception and foster a bright, inviting, and vibrant campus community by portraying a welcoming sense of arrival at our front doors. Over the past year, we've started to implement these strategies with improvements to the student and visitor entrance at the downtown Milwaukee campus. A coffee shop welcomes students and visitors near the main entrance to the student center, and vibrant and engaging, open and welcoming offices have been constructed to engage and service students in the new admission center and career hub. A showcase of school pride is being designed on the main level of the student center to engage visitors and students and excite them about M A T C's mission and impact. These new welcoming and engaging entrances have also been created at the Mequon Campus, the Technical and Applied Sciences Building, and Sea Building entryway to the Milwaukee PBS offices and studios. Each entry in major directional node must promote creative and integrated wayfinding, using repeated, subtle, and intuitive opportunities for visitors and students to seamlessly arrive at their intended destination. Technological and digital touchscreen elements will be used to enhance the wayfinding experience. This vibrant sense of community continues with the creation of hubs of activity that encourage students, faculty, and the public to connect outside of the classroom in happy, chance gatherings. Services should be integrated, offering a variety of spaces for concentrated study or informal and formal collaboration and support areas that draw on students' desire for collaboration and informal learning. In addition to interior spaces, the master plan calls for outdoor spaces to extend the sense of living room space with outdoor classrooms and pedestrian-friendly streets and sites that enhance sustainable alternative transportation options. Community connectivity and diversity and inclusion will be on display with the addition of community artwork throughout the M A T C campuses and promoted by spaces that are welcome and useful by all. Employer and donor connections will be highlighted and promoted, emphasizing M A T C's prominence and importance to our community. Also on display must be easy and frequent visibility through portals into the many state-of-the-art technical labs and classrooms across the M A T C campuses. The master plan calls for the use of window storefronts into these spaces to display the breadth and depth of technical college programs M A T C has to offer, with views from public corridors and public street front sidewalks into these bustling, beautiful, and inspiring academic spaces. Most M A T C spaces lack a unified and consistent brand expression across all campuses. And the master plan calls for correction with spaces that celebrate M A T C's position and presence. Opportunities are being created to strengthen M A T C's culture and sense of pride and celebrate with various and consistent expressions of M A T C's school colors and logo. All throughout the master plan, sustainable and equitable opportunities are reinforced that support M A T C's strategic priorities and community responsibility with energy-efficient applications, the use of renewable sources of energy, and responsible stormwater management strategies like the 200,000-gallon stormwater cistern being installed under the baseball field at Oak Creek. The master plan supports M A T C's sustainable and resilient future by focusing on diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as stewardship of environmental and financial resources. While work on the master plan has begun, more work remains to be done to multiply this work across all M A T C campuses. The facilities master plan for Milwaukee Area Technical College provides a roadmap of improvements for the next 10 years that is key to solidifying community partnerships, student success, and the college's ongoing sustainability for years to come.
So the video you just saw really demonstrates some of the work that we have had underway here at the college, particularly probably over about the past 18 to 24 months. We've done a lot in our S building in particular, which is our student center at the downtown campus, to really create and mimic what we're trying to create through our guided pathways initiative as students enter our facility, get enrolled in our facility, and then move into our student life activities and all of the other activities we have here on, on campus. We've done a lot of design elements around our pathway offices, corridor improvements. You saw a lot of that in the video, our study nodes, wayfinding, connected classrooms. We've implemented much technology in many of our classrooms to create a hybrid model of teaching. We're creating many community spaces. You saw the PBS lobby that we just created that creates a sense of entry to our Milwaukee PBS station, and we will be doing much work on the auditorium that is connected to that space to ensure that we have a space for convenings and showings of various programming that is being done on, at Milwaukee PBS. We have many sustainability projects as well underway. We just created a pocket park at Eighth and Juno, where people can go and enjoy the outdoors and have benches and seating in that area. And you also saw on the video our plans for a T-building green roof project, again, creating more outdoor sustainability projects, which we will be partnering with our culinary arts and other programs to support those efforts. Next slide, please. I would like now to turn it over to Larry Barton from Strang Architects. This slide was also in the presentation that we provided you. This is really a culmination of the program projects that have been identified through the work that has been done through the, through the master planning process. It really to support what we drew from in terms of our academic and strategic enrollment data points that we received through the course of this project. So I'm going to turn it over to Larry to spend some time just summarizing the various projects that have been identified through this facilities master plan. Larry?
Yeah, thank you, Janice. Like Janice said, the slide that you see on the screen right now really summarizes all of the projects in two categories. One is large capital projects. These are typically new buildings or large site improvement type projects that would be funded outside of your annual budgets. The smaller annual projects that would occur over a 10-year period are shown on the right-hand side of this slide. And all we've identified currently 75 different projects that are, are really identified as important projects to accomplish the guiding principles and the desired outcomes that were identified earlier in this master plan. We've got 12 large capital projects. So there's, they're identified individually at each of the campuses included. You can see at the bottom line the, the estimated cost in today's dollars for those projects at 319 million, and then total and annual projects of 62 million. Another strategy that was built into the master plan was just looking at total square footage. And as we look to the future over a 10-year period, we're finding efficiencies in square footage that can be attributed to elements like the connected classrooms and the ability of students to, to attend class both face-to-face in a classroom and also remote login. And we see that as a accelerated trend moving into the future. What that's allowed us to do is to focus a little bit more on improving the quality of your facilities, but not necessarily having to expand the quality or the quantity of your facilities. The note in red is an important note. The master plan identifies building divestitures of outdated or inefficient infrastructure. And the master plan adds to it a new square footage that's on modern, energy-efficient, and low maintenance cost. The net result is a slight reduction in total district square footage, but a move towards quality over quantity. Next slide, please. Looking at the distribution of project types in the larger video presentation, we showcased multiple strategies for improvements to your facilities. They're categorized in these five basic categories. And this is how the master plan, those 75 projects are really balanced out. The, there's 29 different classroom lab projects, which basically transition your classroom environments into hybrid learning environments, the connected classroom strategies. And 29 of those, in that total budget, about $20 million worth of projects identified. Now, there's 38 interior commons type projects. These are the projects that really improve the student experience and improve overall student functionality and access to resources and amenities within your facilities. The library information commons type spaces, the pathway hubs, and those types of projects. And generally, we're trying to cluster those projects into kind of vibrant centers of a student and faculty interaction. There's eight office, faculty office suite projects identified at this point. Each campus has a combination of these project types. And 10 outdoor storefront-type projects. These are exterior improvement projects to improve the main entry sequences and the outdoor environments, creating more active use of those spaces. And then three different smaller building addition type projects that would fit into your annual budgets. It's important to understand the mixture of these. We don't consider any one of these particular project types as a standalone solution to achieve all of your goals. At M A T C, moving forward, we really see them as an important integrated strategy. And the overall success of the implementation of these strategies is to move them forward in an integrated fashion. There's actually 87 total projects identified in the master plan. Again, 75 of those are these annual projects that would be budgeted over the next 10 years. There's 12 additional large capital projects. And any of those large capital projects actually include a complete mix of these different project types and strategies all within, in new facilities. The $62 million note there applies to the 75 annual projects and not the additional 12 large capital projects. Next slide, please. And then the benefits of the master plan. The master plan really is a necessary tool. It's intended to give you a document that you can refer back to that helps you make evidence-based decisions. There's a lot of research and data that's gone into the recommendations of the master plan. And what's being recommended is based on the vision for the future of the college and the guiding principles that have been established at the beginning. It's intended to be an achievable master plan, something that can be implemented over a 10-year period and is feasible in terms of financial feasibility. It's very much intended to be flexible. Over a 10-year period, priorities can and may change. Other opportunities may present themselves that we're not aware of up to date. So it's a, it's a very flexible tool that would be revisited on an annual basis and but used as a strong foundation for decision-making. It's, it's intended to bring consistency to your campuses. You've started that process with the projects that have been started already in the video that you just saw. It's really extending a lot of those strategies consistently across all campuses. And that's important because the student experience is a big part of your competitive advantage, is you're looking to in essence, reverse a trend that's being projected, which would suggest a decline in student enrollment if you don't do, if you just continue to maintain operations and facilities at their current level. So we do see this as an important needed intervention to, to implement the strategies that are being recommended here. And the master plan is in alignment with student demand and employer demand. A detailed study was conducted to understand the needs of your employment base, as well as the desires and needs of your students. And these recommendations are in alignment with that and should form a strong foundation of conversation as you look for community partnerships moving forward. And then all of this is being done in a way that not only reduces square footage, but also puts facilities in place that will be much more cost-effective to maintain and operate moving into the future. The statement at the bottom is what we've been saying. The facilities master plan is a roadmap. The sustainable and resilient future of M A T C is the destination. This facilities master plan is just a starting point of that and really what we'll use to start a conversation with all of you today in terms of how we can continue to work with this and continue to fine-tune it to meet your needs. Next slide.
So I think the question is, where do we go from here? And these are just some of the next steps that we'll be looking at today. Obviously, we're here to review our plan. We presented the plan in a recorded way last week, so you've had a chance to take a look at it. We're here to gather your input and to answer your questions today about the plan. We'll be bringing back final approvals for that plan and continuing to refine that. Once it is completed, we'll be developing a communication plan and creating some excitement around unveiling the plan as we move forward. We'll continue on an annual basis to prioritize and implement our annual projects. As you know, every year we allocate $18 million to our capital projects, and we have priorities. And this plan will really serve as our prioritization model as we move forward and how we bundle those projects and how we sequence those projects to give us the greatest return on those investments. And then obviously, there's always going to be financing decisions and referendum planning, should we go, choose to go through that route. That is a very, very detailed process we would need to go through. A lot of planning would need to be done into that as well to understand our community readiness to do that. So that will be further conversations as we go into the future. So with that, obviously, you've had a chance to take a look at it. We're here to answer questions. We've had some questions from a board member. We've provided those answers, and I understand that there are some subsequent questions to those answers. And we will try to answer those in writing as we move forward. And, but again, if there are questions from board members today, we're happy to spend some time on our agenda for the next, I believe, we have until 11:45, so about 15 minutes on clarifying questions or questions that the board has based on the presentation, either the recorded presentation or what's been presented here today. So Director Baker, I see your hand is up.
Hi, thank you. So, and first, thanks for providing us this information. I think this was our board chair's idea to get the information to us before the meeting, and I really appreciate that. Gave us, I think, all a chance to really take a better dive into it and then allow more time for conversation. I also have to say that I had the luxury of going on a tour with Janice Falkenberg at my orientation, and I was absolutely blown away by some of the changes that have already happened. As someone who's known the college for many years, I was delighted to see a lot of what's going on. So I'm very, very excited about this. I think it's very deserving. I appreciate the framing of it. So I have a couple of questions. And I appreciate that we were just taken to what is page 44 with the total master plan budget. So my questions on the budget, so I have a couple. One, when we approve this plan, doesn't mean we will be approving this budget for it. She's shaking her head no already. Okay.
No, we wouldn't be approving the budget. Obviously, you, as you know, Director Baker, we can only, we can only bond up to a certain number, and we do those. And so annually, the board does see our full plan for that $18 million allocation and the prioritization for that. So no, I, we would not be approving that we're going to actually spend this money on these projects. This is a roadmap for the future. And we'll be picking projects and sequencing projects from the projects that are kind of identified in this plan, and there are going to be many more. So as Larry mentioned, the 62 million that's identified here for our annual projects, we have 18 million a year. If you extrapolate that out over 10 years, that's, it's, I'm not good at math, but I can actually do that, $180 million. So there's going to be much prioritization that's going to need to be done annually for additional projects outside of this master plan. As you know, with our aging infrastructure, we have many, many needs in terms of the types of things we need to, to make sure that our buildings continue to function appropriately. We have HVAC systems. We have other classrooms that need updating. We have many other things that come up through the course of the year. So this is just a piece of our total annual 10-year phase-out budget. But this really gives us a sense of what are those things that rise to the top in terms of really getting at some of the things that we've identified. in terms of really getting at some of the things that we've identified in terms of the recommendations that's going to help us maintain and retain our students from a facilities perspective and remain competitive in our region. So I, I hope that answers that question.
Well, it was kind of, I had like sort of three parts to it. Get that. Then this should be really simple, the, where it says annual projects and the large capital projects. I assume those are separate from the way Larry just explained it. So but just from my understanding, because again, when we're approving this, we're looking at something that long range has these price tags on it and it's just important for us to get a sense of that. So I'm assuming those are additions, correct?
So the large projects, going back to the full presentation, were those new facility projects. So I think we identified a number of them at different campuses. So downtown, I believe there was like a health and wellness facility, sports facility. So that was downtown, I believe, at the Oak Creek campus. We had a protective services facility that we were proposing to build. And then at Mac One, we had a health building. So those are be the large capital projects that we would have to actually consider referendum going to or seeking, you know, other, you know, philanthropic. If we could get like a really great hundred million dollars from somebody, then we could build the building. But so yeah, those large ones are kind of outside of our bonding ability. So those, that's why they're separated.
And then the last thing is just more sort of a looking forward piece also. And on page ten of the presentation, it's about the data informed decisions. And so just so that as we're looking at this, I, I want to get a good understanding of how pieces integrate with where we see growth in programming. So for instance, you just said the healthcare program. But I, I don't know as much about the sports and wellness and whatever. So just that as we're talking about these, to understand how our academic planning and our facility planning are married. So those were my pieces. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to let Larry talk a little bit about how the data was integrated that we received from R N L, which is a, a nationwide consultant that we utilize. There's their services to get us the data from our community, employer data as well as enrollment data. And then I can speak to perhaps, I'm sure others on the call could also speak to the need for us to make sure that we're looking at the student holistically from a health and wellness perspective and how we're trying to serve our students in our community based upon their, their needs holistically, not just their academic needs. So Larry, do you want to maybe start with the data piece that Director Baker asked? And then we can get into some of the specifics about health and wellness and athletics.
Yes, certainly. A lot of the large capital projects and, and even some of the, the annual projects that have been identified in the master plan have, the decisions and the recommendations have been influenced in part by a study that was done by R N L. And they're an academic planning firm that didn't end up study market analysis, in essence, of what would be successful ventures going forward. And there are really three parts to the analysis that they did. One was to evaluate student demand for various programs within your district. Another element was to evaluate the employer demand or the employer need for, for the various programs and the strength of that need. Then a third element was your competitive positioning against other institutions in the area that are either offering or not offering some of these programs. And taking all three of those elements into consideration, they were able to identify certain programs that they would see as being in high demand by students and high demand by employers and positioned for you to have a competitive advantage. Meaning maybe they weren't being offered extensively by your competition, but they're in high demand both by students and employers. That's kind of the, the perfect world. When all three of those come together, it becomes something that you have a high probability of success if you're providing facilities and offering those particular programs. The results of that, which was summarized in the last presentation is that there is a strong demand for these capital improvement projects that are being recommended. The highest demand in the healthcare area and the protective services area. And then the health and wellness focus is kind of a combined, combined recommendation in the sense that it's, it's a facility that represents itself as a student amenity and creates a competitive advantage in terms of a, how you stack up against a competing educational institutions. But it's also something that can be integrated into the programming that you offer. So we would see it as academic programs plus student amenities kind of built into the same facility. And that facility was being suggested for the downtown campus.
Right. And so as some of our board members know, we've tried to create an on campus resource center for our students where we bring community partners in to provide services to our students. So this would be just basically, or just more growth to provide more access to healthcare, mental health services, stable food, food pantry, food, stable housing opportunities. All of those things that our students really have told us that, that, that attract them as well as keep them in college. So it's really a place where we'd be looking to have a facility and we're looking at other partnerships throughout the, the community as well as where we could integrate ourselves into their spaces. But in a perfect world, having our own facility where we can bring in partnerships through healthcare services and then use those as places where our own students can actually train and have experiences through internships and other curriculum opportunities where they can really embed themselves and it's a place where students can help students. I don't know if there's anybody else on the line that wants to add to that vision, but it's something that we've been talking a lot about and working on extensively as a college to make sure we have that, that approach toward holistic student service.
Drew, I don't know if you have anything to add to that. Otherwise, we can go on to the next one.
I think then.
If I may ask a question.
Certainly.
I find this, the, the analysis with the ability to analyze the proposal very limited, given that we don't have the underlying data that this is all based on. So when you say to me, and I believe you, but I don't have the data to second guess that at all or question it at all, that this is something which is in high demand. We're talking about the health and wellness. I don't know what that means. Related to that, this has been described as both in amenity, that is, services we're going to be providing to students to get them to enroll and keep them enrolled, but also having that an academic component. But I, I don't hear in your discussion, the health and wellness center, what the academic component of that is. What is it that we would be teaching there? Are we going to be teaching how to provide mental health and other services and then using students as, as part of the population? I mean, what, what is the vision for that? This, there's, let me just get a couple of points out here that, based on what you've already said. So that's one. Second is, you talked about the R N L data attempting to align employer demand with perceived student demand. But I wonder what analysis has been done to understand the relationship between the high demand categories that are identified through that process on one hand versus the high demand employment needs that the state develops and uses for our funding proposals. Is there a connection between those two? Are they the same? Are they inconsistent? Or what does that mean? And, and there is a, a financing issue that emerges from that, depending on whether they are in alignment or not. Third question is, when you talk about, what was the term storefront projects? You also talked about window storefronts, which I understood to be internal. Are we talking through one of these terms about actually having independent businesses as storefronts on the front of our buildings? I think that's, that's what I gleaned from the presentation of, I think it was showing U W, actually, what they had done in some, some regards. And if so, what is the basis for the belief that there is sufficient demand to actually fill those with retail businesses? And then lastly, I don't understand the information from the main projects chart talking about, I, I believe it's Walker's point, identified as W S one and W S two. W S one is a historic renovation of a corner building. It across the twenty seven million. W S two is the raising and replacement of a building. And I don't understand at the moment whether the building that would be raised and replaced includes the one for which we're talking about spending twenty seven million dollars to renovate. Are those overlapping projects? Do we choose one from column A and not one from column B? How do those things relate to each other? Thanks.
Okay, so I try to unbundle all of that. That's, that was a lot of questions in one. So I think the first one that I can take is probably easiest one. No, the storefronts are not anticipating we're going to have businesses. The storefront concept is what we, it can give you an example of one of those is what we did in our harvest center. So it is windows looking into what we're doing on campus. It's creating excitement from the street level or within the hallways as prospective students tour our facilities to see what's happening in the classroom. So I think there's an interior concept of storefronts and an exterior concept of storefronts. And that's what we mean by that. Could we possibly have some retail components where our students are actually getting experience in some businesses that might come onto our campus? So for example, if we would want to bring in some partners, particularly in the healthcare area or something like that, that would be doing some of our programmatic pieces. That could be a possibility, but that's, you know, those are all things that could be developed for the future. So I hope that answers the storefront question. I think with respect to your last question about the W S one, W S two, W S stands for Walker Square. So that's the acronym, you know, that's the, and Larry can speak to perhaps the sequencing of that large project that's being proposed. So I'll let him speak to that. The issue on the data, the R N L data, I'm going to have Larry speak to how that was integrated. And then I've lost track of your very first question. So if you could just go back to that one.
Very first question was about the nature of the health and wellness facility.
Okay.
What is the academic purpose, which hasn't been described to, to my ear, as opposed to a place where social services would be provided to students?
Yeah, I think it's embedding like we have at our healthcare facilities right now. We have the curriculum that's taught in, at the healthcare settings. So if we would have a healthcare provider at that facility that would be providing medical services to our students, we could create that same experience within that same space. That's just one example of what it could be. We could have other providers there. We have a lot of programs in the health and human services area, social working, social work, A O D A programs. Students could be participating in those, in that environment as well to learn and to work with our own students on those issues. So I hope that provides a couple of examples of how curriculum and our programs could be integrated into that space. And I see Dr. Martin also hands her hand up.
I would just add to, to that first question that you had, Director Foley, that we've been talking with some community partners around this as well. And so what we are interested in is serving as another clinical site for our students as well as our dietary tech program around nutrition. And so we just find that it, it would really help us in that regard to, to serve as a clinical site by bringing in another partner with that and looking at trauma informed care services, traditional and alternative. We already have some programs that, that you've approved that are on other campuses that we'd like to include on here as well, including yoga and some of the other programs that we have. So that, that would be what our interest would be around that. And it is definitely a need in our community when we look at what other institutions have. It, it's something that I think that our students could greatly benefit from. And they currently are not being offered these services. And I think that they deserve to have the same services they would get at other college campuses.
Thank you. So I'll turn it over to Larry and I know we're running short of time here. And so I want to try to wrap this up and then just see what the, the scope of other questions are that we have from other board members. Go ahead, Larry.
Those real quickly here, you know, just add to that storefront concept. It isn't, you know, exterior storefronts are what's primarily identified in the facilities master plan. We're encouraging transparency from the street and the sidewalk into your facilities to promote your facilities. Some of the projects we've identified in conjunction with storefronts are those ones that have a retail component to them in a sense, but they wouldn't be, they would be just programs that are being highlighted for the campus. Things like putting the bookstore and the, you know, a food service type operations or cosmetology, things like that on the exterior that could be a little more transparent and exposed in situations like that. The, the R N L data and, you know, where that comes from in terms of employer demand. I think that was one of your questions. Basically, they drew employer information from about a one hundred mile radius around Milwaukee. And they had three different sources of data. One is governmental data on unemployment demand and the different types of industries. That's the labor market data. They also researched job postings within this radius to understand the strengths of job postings that were being asked for. And then they also were reviewing resumes and profiles to see the alignment of, you know, how much workforce was available, thus kind of creating them, the demand and the opportunity for providing those programs. So that there was a lot of employer data that went into the employment demand or the employer demand component of this. Now, the Walker Square component, those two projects can either be combined or they can be separated. They're, they're kind of optional, master planning opportunities that have been identified. There is a historic component to that building. And we were aware of the fact that even the local municipality may require that at least a piece of that campus be maintained and may be restored. So we treated the historic corner there as a potential historic restoration project. If the community were favorable and you felt it was the right thing to do to take the entire building down, we have that as a project as well. But they could actually be two separate projects totaling up to that amount. Because if you, if you restored the entire site and also historically restored that corner building, we feel that the budgeted costs are probably the combination of those two and not just one or the other.
I want to be cognizant of the time and our, our agenda, but I do want to make sure. And Director Olson, I'll kind of turn it over to you as to how you'd like to, to move the conversation forward now.
I want to make sure if there are any other directors that have specific questions on the details. We do have some more discussion coming up. We have a, just a quick break here for people to sort of reorganize. And then we are going to have some more discussion about it and some bigger questions that were shared out for the board as a whole. But I want to make sure if there's any, what I would call questions that have been shared so far from any, any of the other directors that are online, give you an opportunity at this point to either raise your hand or just share if you have a question to be answered at this point. It's why I'm not seeing any virtual hands or real hands or like that based on my screen. So I'm going to assume that people are, any other body parts or anything that we're okay at this point, knowing that we do have some discussion coming up and some opportunities that may lead to some other questions through discussion as we move forward. So we do have a scheduled five minute break and I want to give everybody a chance. We do have a scheduled five minute break and I want to give everybody a chance to do that, to do what they need to do and just sort of stretch a second and then, um. Uh, come back. So we are at 11:55 right now. So if everybody can come back ready to go at noon, um, to move into those discussions, questions that we have for that part, um, I would appreciate it. So we'll just take a, a slight pause here for everybody to. Stretch, uh, grab. Another cup of coffee or whatever it is that you need and we'll be ready to start at noon.
Hi Jake, it's Mark Foley. Sorry, missed your call.
Mark, you're gonna, Mark, you're gonna want to mute. Monitors, uh, uh, back on. We are at noon. So if you are back at your computer, if you want to turn your. Monitors, uh, uh, back on. We are at noon. So if you are back at your computer, if you want to turn your. Monitors, uh, uh, back on. We are at noon. So if you are back at your computer, if you want to turn your. Monitors, uh, uh, back on. We are at noon. So if you are back at your computer, if you want to turn your. Monitors, uh, uh, back on. So Janice, I'm assuming that your team will be running through the next, the, the input questions that we have. I'm not sure if you're going to put them on the screen or, or how that will be.
Yeah, I think the, uh, they will be put on the screen. So there are a couple of discuss, uh, discussion questions that we would, um, like your input on for today's session. Um. And again, if there are other questions as we go through these, uh, that board members have about the presentation or anything, we'll be glad. Um, to answer those. Also, if. You have questions after this meeting that you, uh, feel you didn't, weren't able to get answered here today just because of the timeframe or, or you think of that after the meeting. Please forward them, uh, to Beth, um, as well, and we'll make sure that we get, um, answers to those questions for you in writing. Um, and then, uh, hopefully we can, we can get, um, all of the input that's needed and, and questions answered. So, um, the first question that we would like. Some discussion on and some input on our, uh, is the first one here. And I've got to just change my screen layout here. So I can actually see the question in front of me. Um, and that is if you were to rank the types of projects from highest to lowest priority, how would you rank them and why? And we've got four examples here of. The types of projects that are outlined in the facilities master plan for consideration. And so we'd, we'd like to have some discussion from you as to how you would rank them. And if we were in person today, our goal was to have breakout sessions. So we would have a little bit more intimacy with. The, uh, number of people in a breakout room, but due to open meetings laws and just technology and live streaming, uh. We kind of had to shift our, uh, our, our way in which we're doing this today. So we'd welcome some discussion on, uh, this, this question in terms of ranking of projects. And you saw all the projects that, uh, Larry had shared in terms of annual projects and large construction projects. And this is just kind of condensing that down a little bit, um, more. So I don't, I can't see hands because my screen is pretty small here. Um. But I'll try to do my best in monitoring who's raising a hand. So who wants to be the brave first one to go first? And obviously this isn't an easy question because with so many different competing priorities, it's, it's challenging. And that's what we face every year as we prioritize projects is. How do we rank them? How do we, we do have a matrix in which we rank projects and we obviously safety is always at the top of that list. Um, but, um, you know, with so many competing, uh, what, what would be the number one thing that you would think, um, would be the most important?
I don't mind getting it started.
Director Baker?
I'm always good for that. Um, I do like number two because it's very student focused. Uh, and I, you know, I'm, as you heard in my previous questions. Um, you know, I, I'm very eager to see how the, our academic planning integrates with our facility planning. And so. It would seem to me that number two is our primary. Um, uh, you know, sort of our, our primary priority. Um, I certainly think number one and, and particularly sustainability, um, in anything you talk about facilities right now is also very key. Which isn't to say three and four aren't important, uh, at all. Um, so if I was going to prioritize them, I might go. Two, four, one, three. How about that?
Thank you. Other thoughts?
This is Director Mays. Um, I, I'm sorry. It took me a while just to try to gather my thoughts and try to figure out which one I would put. A priority if I had to rank them is I would agree with, uh. With Lauren that I do like to focus on number two, um, cause I think especially with. Um, you know, the classroom and, and how I think we need to readjust. And restructure our classroom to accommodate, uh, you know, COVID. Certainly make sure that, uh, that our classrooms are in line. We, you know, uh, you know, our labs as well too. So I, I would have to say that my, my. My, what my preference would be number two, definitely the, um, upbringing, the classrooms and labs. My next option would be my preference would be number three, especially, um, you know, to find facilities that would. Help create, uh, more job opportunities for our students in the protective services, the healthcare, uh, arena. Um, and then move to number one and then number four. So my, my preference would be two, three, one and four.
Thank you, Director Mays.
Um, hi everyone, if I may. She's showing my perspective here. Okay.
Director Diaz.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I would start with, you know, number four. Uh, I think for me would be like the number one. Um, priority and the reason for that would be because sometimes, um, opening up the doors for the facility to all kinds of people. Uh, that's kind of what we need sometimes, you know, a different, uh, cultures or different mentalities kind of. Probably, uh, get underway for people to feel welcoming sometimes. And, um. That particular one for me, uh, I would be number one, you know, because he would be more welcoming for, for, for other people. And the inclusive and the, you know, uh, and environment that, you know, will create this. Sense of openness for, for the facility to, to, to a more diverse, uh, um, community. That would be for me, number, number one. And then I will agree with, uh, the other, uh, directors here about the number two. Uh, building state. And then I will put number one on, on third and final number three. Um, I also think that the, uh, component of safety is very important too. And we also have, have to be gonna. Uh, have that in our minds as well. Uh, I know the, uh, downtown facility feels pretty safe because you have the police in front, but it's also hard to keep it in mind. So that's my. My, uh, perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Diaz.
This is Director Case. Um, as much as I agree with all of the previous statements and would love to say, you know, number two and number four are. High priority. I don't think we should underestimate number one. I think coming back from COVID and a potentially. Ongoing, you know, health. Pandemic for the next couple of years, air quality is going to be huge. We've seen outbreaks in schools and in workplaces. Um, that's kicked up quite significantly with Delta. I think investing in that is not a bad idea right now. Also, um, you know, safety prior to the pandemic, we did have some safety issues at the downtown campus. And I'm not sure how updated our systems are in some of those places. Um. So as much as I would love to say that, you know, number two and number four are the top of our priority. I don't think we can underestimate the importance of. Number one and, and what we need to do to keep students safe and healthy when they come back to campus.
Any other thoughts on that number two or three, Director Case?
Um, well, I, I mean, I think, I, I think number two is important, right? I think as we, we continue into some of the high. High demand fields and as we look at, you know, Director Foley mentioned before, some of the, the focused funding that we've got for certain programs. And as we come out of the pandemic and see where the workforce takes us, I think it's important for us to make sure that we've got. Updated. So for me, you know, number two is a strong priority. Um, I would struggle between, you know, one and two as being. The top priority. And I also do think number four is very important, um, as we continue to move through. Um, you know, kind of the next phase of returning to campus and, and bringing in new students that are. Potentially going to be in a very different place in life coming out of, you know, COVID. Um. I love number three, but I also think there's a lot of changes happening in the workforce right now. So I think there's a lot that we, we don't know and we'll see changes in. Um. So I, I hesitate to put that. Top of the priority unless we're feeling confident that those are actually, you know, kind of programs and specific things that are going to continue to be high demand.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other thoughts from other board members? Again, just speak up because I can't see everybody on my screen at one time.
I can share Janice. Um.
Yeah.
Um, otherwise there's time to your mark. Feel free to jump in. I was like getting everybody a chance, but like if you, uh, there's no order or whatever here, but I thought I'll. You both look like you're deep in thought, so I'll, I'll give it a shot. Then you can jump in after that. But. Yeah, I mean, I think everybody's sort of, you know, I, I wish these were not ors. I wish they were ands or bits and pieces of it because it's really hard to isolate them. You know, I think, um, with Director Diaz, I, I agree with him that the safety specifically really sticks out in item number one for me. So. Not that I don't believe in air quality or sustainability and all that stuff, but. You know what we know about people feeling safe, um, which, you know, to me sometimes goes with item number four, like people have to have that physiological need met first before they're able to engage in some of the other pieces. And so I guess. Knowing that the, the spaces are safe and, and what that means, you know, can mean a lot of different things. And so. I think that that's an important piece and, and whether that's, you know, a, 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 a presence of police or, or whatever that is, I'm really more looking at the safety of. Of, of classrooms from that and that the, the, even the furnishings in that are, that we feel safe with what's in there. Um, I agree with Director Case about item number three, that, um, it would be great that. You know, to invest a huge investment in, you know, those, uh, workforce needs. I think it's what we are and what we do. Um, I think that there's maybe some opportunities for partnerships as we try to meet those workforce needs there. Um, that we are, and I know we have great partnerships there. I would also want to make sure that we aren't, that we have some really good data that supports. Um, that those workforce needs are what they are and that the, the. Business community supports that also because those could be some significant investments in item number three. Um, and also having, you know, item number two, it, it is what we do. So making sure the facilities from which we teach. Are using, you know, up to date. Both spaces and labs or anything that's needed to make sure that we're not compromising the, the level of education and learning that we can provide. So it's, it's a little bit tricky. Cause I would sort of like to mix and match some of these a little bit differently. And so. Knowing that, you know, items one and four, what we know about, you know, Maslow's hierarchy of needs until those are not met, people aren't really able to fully engage and do those other needs. Um, so I guess I'd want to make sure there was at least a base. Uh, base level for both number one and four, um, before we moved into the other pieces. But, you know, our, our work is, our industry is learning. So I guess. Number two is, is key to me. So.
Thank you. And yeah, I really appreciate your comments about the safety piece because safety means a lot of different things and a lot of different spaces. So yeah, I really appreciate that distinction between. Um, between that word because it can be in both one and four. Um, anybody else? I think we haven't heard from Director Hamilton or Director Foley. Any thoughts?
I don't have anything to add. I think it's, I think it's been covered by the others.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing that if my, uh, points were kind of covered by, um, by, by other members. But I was going to say, say this, I think this, this is a little different and, and you kind of covered it in your. opening to this exercise, which is, you know, we kind of have a responsibility to do all of these. And I would hope that we would have some type of measuring stick to say some type of matrix that would say we have the opportunity to do a state of the art classroom. And it would cost this. But really creating a welcoming culturally inclusive environment that is directly helping students actually come to the university and participate in those academic classrooms in the first place and actually be successful participating in some of the educational programs. You know, that we would have a, a way of saying, you know, we're going to do this first as opposed to doing that one because we kind of have a responsibility of doing all of them. But as far as some of the explanations are, that some of the other board members gave about the, about the priorities. I think I agree with them. It's, it's kind of hard to prioritize. It would kind of depend on the situation. And, and some of our obligations are even beyond the school, right? Like if we have a building that we're bringing people into, we kind of have a responsibility for for the safety of those, of those people before we even start talking about our educational responsibilities. So, but kind of the explanations are kind of covered by other board members. But yeah, some of these are, they're like children. You can't, you can't pick one over the other. We got to find a way of doing, of doing all of them. So thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Director Hamilton. And, and we, we believe the same thing. It is very difficult. And I can tell you, just being on campus this semester and watching how students are learning and how, what's happening outside of the classroom in our, in our study nodes and other places where students are online, taking their classes in a study known. So just the shift in how students are learning, even as we go through the pandemic and beyond, I think will really help shape kind of our priorities as well because they're just not in the classroom learning anymore. It's, it's a very different approach. They're on their laptops, they're on their Chromebooks, they're on their phones. And they're in spaces that we're creating that aren't traditional classrooms. And that's really how we have to kind of think holistically of our facilities and how we create those spaces. And I think you saw that in some of the video that we showed is how students are engaging and how we bring that engagement of faculty and students together in, in a non-traditional kind of way. Before you'd always have the faculty offices, you know, where they'd be separated from the students. And what we're trying to do now is create that cohesive approach and that collaborative approach to bringing them where the students are to help them and our staff as well. So, so thank you. I really appreciate it. I think everybody got a chance to weigh in if I'm not mistaken. I missed. Did I miss somebody? I'm sorry.
I just wanted one follow up on that.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Because I don't disagree with what you just said at all. And I also, the, I think the conversation was great. I really do. I think we hit on very important points. But I do think one of the things that makes M A T C incredibly unique is all of our hands-on labs, career programming. You know, the stuff that really gives people that real life experience. And so while I do appreciate that there is increasingly the blended learning, the hybrid learning, and a lot of classes that our students are doing virtually. And that that, and I, in everything that we're talking about here is helping us make those transitions. There is still, you know, that reality when I walked into that new auto lab, I was just, I was blown away. And that's how a student needs to feel. They are also in a state of the art environment that is respecting them as a student by giving them the very highest technology. So we, we still have an obligation to create those labs while understanding that some of our traditional classroom settings are changing.
Yeah, thank you, Director Baker. Totally agree with that as well. We have a lot of beautiful spaces already and want to create more of those beautiful spaces for our students to be wowed as they come through our facilities. I think we're done with this question unless anybody else had anything they wanted to add. I think we can move on to question number two. So if we can go to the next slide. So, so our facilities plan includes projects on their own and we, we saw some of those annual projects. Or if implemented together might require an investment beyond our annual bonding authority. So again, beyond that 1.5 million dollar project cap and that 18 million dollar annual budget. And we've had other W T C S colleges who have gone to taxpayer approved referendums and several of them have been successful with that. So we're asking with that in mind, if we were to choose to go to this type of funding mechanism, obviously it would take a lot more planning and community input. But are there any steps we need to start doing in the community today in order to gather taxpayer support for a possible referendum? And so would really like to hear from the board members, their thoughts, their suggestions as we start thinking, if we start thinking about going down that path. So Director Foley's hand went up right away. So I know he's got some thoughts. Director Foley?
Yeah, I think we need to be very cognizant of what's happening with the city pension cliff. I don't know what the solution is going to be there, but the city's got to come up with. Ashanti can probably tell us more accurately, but I think it's something like 75 million dollars a year for several years that are outside, outside the current budget. And how are they going to do that? Because that has a big impact on the total tax burden that people within our district are bearing. And so I don't know if we are smart enough to have suggestions about how they should deal with that. But anything that, that, that we can do to either take that into account or or move it in the right direction and move it toward prompt resolution, I think helps us in the end. The other alternative is to rush to get this done. Which generally doesn't work. So that the city's problems are not taken into account before we ask people to approve our money. But I think that's a big elephant in the room.
Okay, thank you, Director Foley. And yes, obviously the city of Milwaukee is a big component of our district, but our district also extends beyond the city limits as well. So just I'm thinking about our entire district, our northern district, Mequon, our Ozaki County residents, Milwaukee County residents, and then we also have just a small amount of residents in Waukesha County that are covered by our district. So maybe I should, so yes, thank you. I think that's an important consideration. Others?
Well, I can, I can add to that. Because I do think, and, and, and we're looking at, you know, trying to set aside 75 million for the next two years, we're looking at 160 million dollars as a pension payment in 2024. But I, I think this jumping ahead plan actually worked for MPS. MPS did have a referendum. You know, right before the pandemic to to, to add 60, 80 million above and beyond their their tax limitation. And they did it before, you know, a lot of this news about this obligation, the pension obligation started to come forward. And it was successful locally. There was a lot of outreach that was done countywide about the commitment to a sales tax that would help pay for some of these pension obligations. There was strong support for it within the city, not as much support for it. You know, for some of the countywide obligations outside of the, outside of the city. So there's, you know, there is just some traditional positioning that I think is you know, kind of predictable about where support for raising taxes and for specific purposes kind of lie. But it, you know, sunsetting these and having some very specific purposes and not general. You know, raising taxes for general purposes without sunset clauses. But when there is a specific need that can be articulated to you know, to constituents, there tend to be a little more support for that. You know, so having a very specific project with a very specific number and a time period by which you want to achieve that. And then sunsetting, sunsetting that tends to be especially during these times, a little more palatable. You know, then, you know, generally raising, raising taxes. So.
Thank you. Others?
I guess having gone through referendums myself, I, I think it's always important to start with the need and the why, starting early as soon as possible. So people aren't just hearing about it at the very last minute before the ask is coming. So they're trying to build that sooner rather than later. I do think in the case of where it's in a countywide referendum, which will appear on, you know, taxes across that and even outside of the county. You know, it, it is going to be challenging to manage all of the other potential referendums that might be impacting people's tax bills because it could be a local municipality that's having a referendum. You know, a new library, it could be a school district. And so, you know, to keep aware of it is, is okay. But it's going to be hard to manage that because that could happen at any, you know, like one area of the county or M A T C district over another might have more. You know, they could be hit with a school district and a municipality and M A T C like all, like that would be crazy, right? So I think it's probably important to like be aware of that. It will be hard for us on a timing perspective to find the right time because of so many various municipalities and school districts within the whole boundaries that will be going to something at some point. So I think that it's definitely something for us to consider. It will be hard for us to find the perfect time. But I do think what I've learned through referendums is to start sooner rather than later, pulling together the conversation, even if we don't have, I, I would never rush it, but just right now, I don't even know if people know, you know, that video that you shared by like, hey, our buildings were built in these years to these years and the latest one is in this year, like that, like, you've just got to start out with something simple like that to start to plant that, you know, I don't know what it is that adults need to hear things 18 times before they actually, it resonates with them. So sooner rather than later, even with some simple things about, did you know how old our buildings are type of thing or whatever. So I guess, and if we are serious about this, even if we're talking three, four, five years, I don't even know whatever the timeframe is this happens, but pulling together the group that's working on this with, with an eye on that to start planning sooner rather than later is all I would say.
Thank you.
Janice, um, we may also want to talk with our colleagues at Milwaukee Public Schools since they went through a very difficult referendum first time in 25 years. With a, you know, institution that's not always has a, that does not always have a real positive view in the community. And they pulled together a fairly remarkable, broad community coalition of business and education leaders and whatever. And had a, they worked with some consultants and had a, a very sort of a long range plan for how they were working on it. And so we may want to chat with them about some of the folks they worked with since we are you know, we, we will, we share much of the same market that they do and certainly a lot of the same media market. So that might be a value.
Thank you. Yeah, we know we're going to have to do a lot of community outreach. So yes, I think having that, that core group help get those, those stakeholders on board would be extremely helpful. Others?
If, if I may, I, I just like to kind of echo what Director Olson said about, you know, just letting people know, you know, the status of where we are right now, especially with the buildings. Instead of that conversation, getting it out there. So that way we can, you know, start projecting also what we need and, you know, start, you know, planting those seeds of what we're trying to achieve. We have the master plan, of course, it's going to need. We're going to be working towards it, towards the future, right? And, but, but if we can share that with public and, you know, open up, you know, what are we trying to do? Just put it out there. Put it out there so people can start digesting, you know, what M A T C is trying to achieve for now and the future that we have a vision, that we have a goal, that, you know, he's going to take the collaboration for the whole community for us to achieve that particular goal. So that's, that's just what I like to add. But.
Thank you, Director Diaz. Any other comments on this?
I think, you know, kind of piggybacking off the last few comments, if, if MPS struggled with, with getting support and getting the word out there. I think when you think about the Milwaukee constituents, there are more people that are invested in and have reason to support MPS than maybe think that they do have reason to support M A T C. So I think just putting out there that our buildings are old, it may not incentivize people to feel like that's important to them or why. So I think it's also really important for us to put out there what we do, why we're important, all of the things that we offer, because you've got to hit at, you know, somebody, this is where I want my taxpayer money to go. And if they don't have a connection or a student or a history to M A T C, it may not be on the top of their list. And to, you know, Dr. Olson's point, if there, if I've got six different referendums that I've got to decide where my money goes, is this going to be the top for a lot of people? I don't know. You know, so I think, I, I think just saying our buildings are old is not necessarily going to be enough to get the majority support. I think we have to, we have to be very articulate. And, and I think that's in general. I mean, I think most people don't know about our transfer programs, right? That you can spend your first years. I think most people don't know about our dual enrollment and all of those things. So I think it's a really important for us to focus on the what's in it for me for constituents and helping them understand why it's important to the community.
Yeah, thank you, Director Case. I think those are really great points. And, and the industries that we provide the workers to and how they're, how they're supporting getting to the market, what they need in their personal lives, the healthcare, the protective services, first responders. I mean, those goes on and on. So yeah, I, I, that's a really great point. Thank you. All right. Any other thoughts on this question? Really great discussion. We really appreciate people's willingness to share their thoughts. And I know it's takes time to sometimes process the question. So if there are other thoughts that you have again after today's session, please feel free to share those with Beth. We'll certainly incorporate those into all of our planning and onto our next steps. I think we're coming up to about 15 minutes left. So I don't know, Director Olson, if you'd like to keep this conversation going or if you'd like to talk about where we go from here.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, they probably can meld together when you think about like, where are we now? Where are we ending it? And then what are the next steps? And, you know, what are some tangible things? Is it that you know, the, the college's team comes back and sort of processes what they heard today and comes back with some suggestions? Do board members want to provide some input on what should be the next step? It seemed like there was some, you know, based on this last question, some, you know, if this is in our future, there's no, if we, if the 10 year plan and what the projects are on there, we think are all necessary. And we've already identified that those cannot be done within our operating budget, then clearly we have to start thinking about how and when and all of the timing of that. So I you know, I, I think that that has to be part of that. And if we are going to that, what does that look like? So I guess I, I'm just wondering if that's a, you know, something that the, the board has some thoughts on what they believe the next step should be. Moving forward to that before we just, you know, kick it back to the college team and see what they believe it is. If we want to have some input on that before we sort of just send it into, you know, what have them develop for us the next step. So I'll take some input from any board members on what they think, you know, a next step should be after where we are right now, after hearing this discussion today and some of the thoughts from board members and that, like what, what would be a, a next step that you would like to see as a board member?
Director Olson, if, if I may, just start with a comment. I, I know we are basically in all of our, you know, projections or for the master plan. Um, I, I know we are basing all of our, you know, uh, projections or for the master plan on data that we have collected and, um, that the R N L data that, um, we talked about from, you know, three components there for the government employer, um, gaps and like the resumes that we have. Um, also, I, I would like to see if we can, it's hard to predict the future, but I know, you know, a lot of markets are changing very rapidly, right? Um, the market is, is gonna probably look a lot different within five years. And I'm sure, um, I, I, I'm glad that, you know, these, um, the master plan is flexible as well. But I would like to have, keep that in mind, that a lot of things are gonna change. And I would like to just share a little bit of a perspective from my industry. Um, everything is going electric. It's gonna take a few years to move in that direction. But I like to remind you that, like, for the technicians that we're training right now, in 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, this may look a totally different than what it looks right now. So let's keep that in mind and, and let's keep it flexible because there's gonna need, there's gonna be a lot of adjustments that I need, need to be made, um, for, for this master plan. And, and it's got to be the future that I know, we have data that we collect to run out to make some decisions. This data is based on today's market. And I think the market is not only in this industry and my industry and in other industries that are gonna change tremendously in the near future. Uh, I should like, I, I, I also have like that.
Um, Antonio, this is Larry. I will add that, uh, the, the recommendations are not exclusively based on the data that was received. There was a lot of interaction with the pathway leaderships and with the instructors and a lot of open, uh, sessions to discuss the results of the data and actually to qualify the data so that we, we had general alignment with, uh, the, you know, you know, qualifying the data that we heard and giving people the opportunity to challenge it and so forth. So just wanted to add that, it's not just the data.
And I would just add that we know the industries that we have programs in are going to change over the next 10 years. But I think what this plan helps us identify, um, and certainly will be reviewed, um, periodically throughout the next 10 years. It's, it's not a static plan, so it is a flexible plan that we are able to adapt. But some of the recommendations and the, and the guiding principles and the concepts that you've seen here today, we just want to make sure that the board feels that we're on the right track, that they feel like we're go, heading in the right direction. And there's a sense of consensus from the board members that this really reflects, um, um, you know, industry trend, future-looking, um, really getting us on the right path to sequencing our projects and really building toward what we're, what we're hoping to create here. And that is that culturally-inclusive, welcoming environment where our students can learn and be successful and get out into the workforce, um, quickly and in the way in which they want to learn. So having those, um, various modalities in the way in which they, they want to learn. So that's really what we're hoping to get from the board is, is a consensus or a feeling that we're on the right track here. We understand that this plan will be ever-changing, just as our world is ever-changing around us. But I do think it gives us a good foundation from which to do our planning and our, um, facilities management because of the way in which our funding is limited and really gives us a way not to be reactionary and to be more strategic thinking. So that's really what I'm hoping that the board can, can kind of coalesce around and, and, and give us that, that type of feedback. Director Foley?
I think there's a, um, I'm searching for a word here, I'm not finding. I, I, I find it difficult to, to figure out the relationship between communicating to the marketplace that we are doing a really good job with what we have, but that we can do more that they would consider to be more valuable if we had the funds requested in a referendum. So when we were talking about, um, you, you can't just come in with the ask at the last minute. You have to do the groundwork beforehand. Part of that groundwork might be to establish regular communications directly with employers of all sizes within the district about, um, uh, the quality of the graduates we have, but also their views on whether we could do more with more. Uh, to, to try to create, uh, an undercurrent in the community that, uh, uh, we've achieved a lot, but to go into the next, into the rest of this century, to go into the future, to infinity and beyond perhaps, um, the, uh, that we need to, uh, to step up the quality of some of the facilities that we have. I don't see that conversation in the community right now. Um, you know, I'm thinking of businesses of the size of Alice Roller, David Doll's company, uh, and the, the programs that we did in the Franklin Business District. Um, wha- what part of what we're doing to support, to satisfy employers' perceived needs in the future requires advanced construction or advanced renovation?
Yeah, and I have, uh, Vice President Bray here too, who's really focused is on that community partnership and employer partnership. So yes, I, I, I agree that I think there's a lot of, um, communication that will need to be, as this plan is approved and completed, there will need to be a lot of outreach, um, with our, with our community partners and employer partners, again, to, to, to serve that kind of roadmap and, and why we need the spaces. So I didn't know if, uh, Laura wanted to say anything more about that.
Sure, I'll, I can say just a couple of things. I mean, one of the, the, one of the interesting things about this is that the individuals actually in a referendum are the people that live in a place. And it may be that the businesses are physically in our district, but the people that we're trying to reach out in that way might not be voters. And so you really do have to have a multi-pran- pran strategy to understand the motivation of both the voters, but then also those, those corporate partners. And so we would, we would need to kind of devise ways to make that case, um, in, in, um, in both cases. I do think that, I, I feel like that our star is rising as a college and the star of community and technical colleges in general i- is rising. Um, I think that if we were having this conversation five, six years ago, we wouldn't be at a place where we're on the ascent at the same way. I think all of us collectively have done a lot of work. Um, I, what, the one thing that we're trying to do in business partnerships is working through organizations like Franklin Business Park or Menominee Valley Partners or Haven Woods Business District, where you have a group of businesses that are already coalesced and working together as a unit to solve problems where we, in working with them, can, can do that more directly. But then we're also working with, um, large companies. We just did a really neat partnership with Johnson Controls that will be announced, um, shortly that you have the first students at sophomore year in high school are going through a dual enrollment program that they could walk away as seniors with 18 credits in H B A C. And that is physically using the facility at Obama High School, doing upgrades to equipment there, but we're doing the instruction. So I think part of the master plan is not just our facilities, but also kind of thinking of us as a community education provider of where do we leverage community assets in those kind of partnerships? Um, on Monday, um, or shortly, there'll be, uh, increase, like announcements with Northwestern Mutual on increased investment and partnership. So we're both looking at where there's coalitions of mid-sized businesses like an Alice Roller working in partnership. Um, but then also larger employers that are real drivers to try to look at very specific needs they have and do very specific solutions. Um, and then finally, I'll just say that, uh, the, the M A T C Foundation Board, the, the board is really focused on recruitment. And, and you'll hear this in the thing for next week, and we can talk about this more then. But we have, um, C-suite individuals from many companies that have joined the board. And I think that work to get them as partners in this and, and really working as volunteers on that board will be important to that end.
Thank you, Laura, and I see Director Case. And then I think we are gonna have to probably wrap up shortly here. Director Case?
Um, sure. So, uh, I, I think your question is more and also lining on the overall kind of direction, right, on this? And, and I think we, you know, there's general consensus on safety and welcoming environment, certainly, to bring people back, you know, and, and to kind of piggyback on, on some of the things that, that, um, were said. I, I do think, before we get into future technology, and certainly, you know, I can jump on the, the electrical, you know, electric vehicle and all of that, because that hits manufacturing quite significantly as well. I do think we have a lot of outdated, basic functions, right? I mean, when I think about some of our skilled trades, some of those labs are highly outdated, right? And those are constant student draws. We've got skilled trades going through all the time. We've got trades. We've got manufacturing. And we've got outdated labs there. So I think before we start talking about what the future is, I think we also need to focus on making sure that we do have, you know, the technology and the updated, uh, updated equipment for our core programs and the core things that we are known for and draw students for, right? I think, you know, going back to the comment about kind of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, that's our bread and butter in some cases, right? That's where you get manufacturing. That's where you get trades, construction, all of those things, and we're outdated. You know, and so whether that's through community partnerships, whether that's through our own budget investment, you know, and healthcare, right? We're gonna continue to have to focus on making sure we've got the best technology, the most current technology for our students. So I think we've got to focus there as well. So if you're asking me for kind of general, overall direction, I would say safety and environment, and then our core stuff, and then future stuff that gets built on, on top of that is where I would, I would land.
Yeah, thank you, Director Case. And I think all those elements are covered through the facilities' master plan, either within the plan itself or just in terms of our annual budgeting for projects. So I appreciate, and that's really what we're trying to sense here today, based on all the inputs you've given us. So I really appreciate everybody's time today to really give us some insight into how you're feeling about the plan. Um, I think the next steps will be, uh, to bring this back to the board, uh, for approval. And, um, then we will, we will go and, uh, implement the plan and get it out in the community and start doing all of those, uh, important steps that we talked about here today is really getting that base-level understanding about what our facilities are, what the services we provide out in our community, what programs we support and what employer needs we support. So I will stop there and turn it over back to Director Olson.
Yep, thank you, Janice, and thank you to your entire team for putting together both the presentation for us to view in advance. Um, I think, you know, I heard a little bit, um, today about that, but we'll continue to look at. I think that uses our time today, um, more effectively to allow it to be in more dialogue than it is in information receiving. Um, so we'll, we'll continue to, 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 um, look at that format when we do have a lot of material that we need to process and simultaneously discuss as a way of using and effective use of our time. So I want to thank you and your team for pulling together all of that information and for, um, being responsive to the questions being asked and, and for moving forward and all of that. So, um, with that, because I want to keep tight to our timeframe here, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you. I was wondering, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So a motion by Director Foley and second by Director Baker, uh, to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.